Okay. So we just called to order. This is our first time. First time doing this kind of a meeting with the general public. So you know, work with us while we work out any kinks. We're going to have a participation for public comment at the end. And this is a very concise budget. I mean, a very concise agenda at this point. We're going to discuss amending a resolution. We're then going to have an update from the town manager, the superintendent, Rob Miller from the Eastern Highland Health District, and John Laitel on COVID-19 update, where the town is, what we're doing, and then public comment. We're going to try to not like, just kind of work with us here. We're going to do the best that we can. So I am going to go ahead and share the agenda for this first, for this first item, so everybody can see the redlined version of the agenda and kind of see what we're talking about. So.
So to read the business item, it's consideration of a resolution to amend Chapter 12 of the Town Code Ordinance Number 84, Emergency Storm Fund. In the setting, the action tonight is to set a public hearing for March 31st, 2020, which gives us enough time that should the council wish to amend the ordinance, it'll be posted in the Journal Inquirer tomorrow for five days, which brings us to March 31st.
Okay, so as Mike just said, consideration of a resolution to amend Chapter 12 of the Town Code Ordinance Number 84, which is currently called the Emergency Storm Fund in the setting of a public hearing there on for March 31st. So Mike, do you want to?
Yep, so again, Mike Rosen, town manager, speaking. This ordinance was originally established back in 2012. Our fire chief, John Laitel, emergency management director during states of emergency, clued me into this ordinance, which is a very good decision to do that, John. Thank you. This is originally established for, I think, back in 2012, we had a slew of a bunch of big storms. And somebody at that time had the foresight to consider putting some money aside into an account to fund for future states of emergency. The only problem is, as written currently, this is only for storm declarations, not for all states of emergency. Clearly during coronavirus COVID-19, this is a viral outbreak state of emergency. It is not a storm emergency. So in order to utilize the funds that are in this or this fund, we would have to, the council would have to make a decision to rename and to repurpose it as an all-around emergency fund. And do so requires a public hearing because you're changing a town ordinance. So again, the action item tonight is to consider the redlined version, which as you'll see as you scroll through it, and all the materials are also available on the Tallinn website, tallinn.org. The main changes is striking the word "storm", and that's adding the word "declaration". So this ordinance would only take effect when there's a state of emergency declared, which we have done in Tallinn back on March 12th. We declared a state of emergency in town. So this would absolutely qualify to be able to use this fund. We cannot do it at the moment, but we would certainly like to do so, having to have a funding source in place to pay for unexpected budgets or unexpected expenditures during this state of emergency. So we declared civil, public health and civil preparedness emergency on March 12th, and we cannot currently access these funds because they are storm.
So I think the thing that we really need to kind of focus is when an emergency is declared, we have the ability to track the money that we're spending for any related expenses towards that. I don't, I want to say, well, we've only ever really used it for storms, but the emergency ordinance, there are a lot of expenses that both the school side and the town side are currently incurring through all of this. And I believe right now, the reimbursement that we've been told, it's, it will hopefully maybe get 75% back of the expenses that we've gotten. So we have to kind of front that money, though. Some of the things that we're seeing expenses for is providing laptops for the town staff and such, so we have work at home capabilities, excuse me, and other expenses in relation to the EOC. So just, this is really just a matter of changing the wording. So instead of it being an emergency storm fund, it's just going to be an emergency declaration fund. Tonight, we're just going to review it quickly and then vote if we want to move this to a public hearing so we can change that and access these funds. Lisa, do you have anything that you want to add? Oh, you're muted. Did you mute yourself? Hold on. Oh, hold on.
Thank you, I'm good. I was trying because the dog was starting to make noise, so, but he's good now.
Like mine, like mine, you know?
Oh, he was growling at something. Anyway. No, I think it is a good idea to go ahead and change this. Certainly, you know, we're not sure what kind of expenses we're going to have going forward. We know of some. John's laptop is a good example. Besides all the other overtime that's being spent right now by his staff and other staff cleaning things. So I think it's a good idea.
Okay. Do you guys want me to continue to share my screen?
Well, if anybody else wants to see this, it's also on the town's website under Council Current Package. So anybody who wants to look through the red lines a little closer is welcome to do so. Truly, the only big change here is striking the word "storm" and inputting the word either "emergency" or the word "declaration".
Yeah, it's the only thing that's changing. The entire ordinance is pretty much staying the same with all of the same rules and regulations, just changing the name of it. So I'm going to stop sharing that so we can go back to our regular view. I see Lou. Lou, go ahead, Lou.
Lou, you're muted at the moment. Please, someone's got to unmute you there.
Where is Lou? Hold on, I lost him. Just, I just lowered his hand, but then he disappeared.
I see him. You want to give me the host back and I can unmute?
Oh, no, I see him. Okay, he is muted. Hold on. Unmute. Unmute. There. There you go. There you go. Can you hear me, Lou?
I can hear you. Click twice if you can hear me, Timmy. No, I just want to make sure that it's also clear that this is the fun, the money that we're using, it's for the contingency only, the emergency that we have declared, upfront expenses, and that we're expecting reimbursement to a certain degree for the expenses from FEMA or from other federal or state agencies. And that that's all it's going to be used for. It's not going to be used for anything else.
Nope, it's just anything related to expenses that we're incurring, like, like Mike said, you know, overtime, stuff like that. Even happening at the EOC and stuff. And we have to track it to get reimbursement. So this is, it's a good way to do that. Anybody else have any questions? Any other counselors?
A few of our counselors are muted, Tammy. You just might want to unmute them.
Well, I saw Brenda was, but I know Brenda mutes herself, so I didn't know if I... Brenda, did you mute? Okay, she's unmuted now.
Yeah, I just unmute so in case there's noise going on, it doesn't interfere with the rest of the screen. You'll notice the yellow squares around me. It's happening to other people, you know, and I just want to make sure no one's getting confused that I'm trying to say something, if it's just background noise. No, I'm very happy with how, you know, clear and concise this is. The ordinance is very straightforward. So no objections or any other?
All right. I am just making sure I have everybody unmuted. That needs to be unmuted. Lou's unmuted. John is unmuted. Steve, Brenda, Kurt, I believe, is, okay. All right, Steve, you had a question? Oh, did I? Oh, hold on, did I? If I unmute you, I mean, if I just raised his, he just raised his hand, and now he's muted. All right, Steve, are you there?
There we go, yeah. I was muted by the host. I was just going to entertain the motion to set the public hearing. So if we had any additional discussion, you could have that discussion while the public, while the motion stands.
All right, let me get, John has his. All right, John, you're unmuted too. You had a question?
So just so there's no surprises, this fund, obviously, like the Tom Andrews said, was created back when we had a couple storms back to back, and we didn't have a fund to tap or code bills to. So as we started like this declaration, it will be a lot easier for me at the end of the day, you know, whether this goes a month or two months. I mean, a lot of our storms went for a couple weeks, but, you know, a lot of the FEMA declarations takes weeks to months to get a dollar value that each county will be eligible to receive. So one of the key points in this is to communicate with your other dignitaries and your other towns out of Tallinn County, because Tallinn County needs to meet a threshold like we have in past storms. And if we don't meet the dollar value, we get dragged down. So sometimes we might not meet the threshold, and we might not be able to be, to receive eligible funding back into this fund. So it's hard to manage, but the biggest thing is just the tracking and coding of the bills of anything that gets attributed to this. So that's why, once we declared an emergency, it's easier to track, which our beautiful finance manager took an aggressive move and, you know, coded the bill and coded the account right away, so at least we all can have the same numbers. So when it comes to three weeks in this storm, this obviously pandemic is looking very crisis, where it could go on for a lengthy period of time, where it's not just, you know, the day-to-day events. This could be a three, four, or five months down the road, where we would have to go back and things that we didn't do, whether it was government, schools, or the community, that we would be revisiting five to six months later. So it could, you know, it could stretch out to a lengthy time. And if we're all in a lull of the storm right now, as, you know, obviously unfortunately, Tallinn County's uprising with the numbers. But if we're ahead of the curve right now, it will make a lot of our jobs easier five to six months, where then our finance managers will be very happy to see that everything's coded and everything flows through a chart. So that is my biggest, my biggest concern moving forth, that we're all on the same page, and everything comes through the EOC with the financing and numbers, and we have the documents versus trying to go back six months later. And it especially hits contracts and union contracts and different things of, you know, where you have staffing and what staffing was performing, what level. So, you know, this is something that this epidemic could really hurt crisis-wise of emergency response and responders, taking some services from mutual aid out of the picture. So this is a, this is an urgent one, and I can't thank you guys enough to bring it up. I was very concerned when I, I knew that this existed and I wanted to tap it, and I looked, I'm like, you know, whether you call this, it's emergency declaration. I mean, we could call this a storm because it's a, it's a storm. I mean, we're in a storm together. So thank you for allowing it and to bring it up to the, to the community and the public.
No problem. John Reagan, you had your hand raised?
I did, I just had a question. Who, so I don't have it in front of me, and I apologize for that, but who has the ability to call or declare an emergency? Is it just the Tom?
John, do you want, John Laitel, do you want to take that question?
So once a declaration is made at the state level, depending on where the emergency is going to take place, it might not affect all the counties throughout Connecticut. Like the last recent tornado that hit the other side of the state, it really didn't affect us, but they had a lot more damage. So depending on what type of nature of an emergency is, each county and each town has the right to then declare a state of emergency, and whether it's a public crisis or an emergency for their community. So from there, what ends up happening is emergency management directors usually go to the CEOs and say, hey, we need to do this, which I ended up doing with our boss. And, you know, it's one of those things where this storm or this epidemic that we're dealing with, obviously, was taking a different part in all the different towns and states. But we, I think we were very aggressive here to be among the other towns. And once we declared it here, I worked at my county level to encourage the other towns around us. So it was very nice to see most of the towns around us take the lead, similar to Vernon and some of the other communities. So the CEO makes the overall decision. And then, once that does it, then the communities kind of have to go into the emergency operation mode and kind of upstand the EOC, if that makes sense. Mr. Reagan?
It does, thank you.
All right. And any other questions from any of the other counselors?
Just one other question.
Go ahead.
Steve Jones, quick question was, do we need any language that makes us retroactive? Or is this going to be automatically available? Because I don't know if, because I don't know if in general it'd be for future, future emergency declarations? Or if we need to make it an effective ordinance change?
I don't think they date on it or anything. Mike, Mike, do you?
I'm looking at it again, yeah.
There's no, I don't think it says that we have to issue a date. Lisa, do you know?
No, they, the way it's written, the manager has the authority to authorize the use of the fund. You have an emergency right now. I think if there's a general consensus between all of you that says, you know, we understand that you're going to go back and be using some of these funds, I don't see any issues with it. The manager, by the language in the ordinance, the manager can move forward between him and I talking and making sure you're informed.
Yeah, that's right.
So I just think when you, when you move the motion, just maybe an understanding.
That it's effective immediately and covers the current crisis or declaration.
Right, right.
Okay, thank you.
And by the way, for those at home, that was Lisa Hancock, Finance Director.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Strange new world, we get it, it's okay.
So I would recommend then, when you make your motion, if you want to say effective immediately or whatever in the language, we can amend the motion.
Okay.
Any other counselors have any other questions? Hey.
All right, otherwise, Madam Chair, through you, I entertain a motion to set up the public hearing for March 31st.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
By roll call vote?
Yeah, it has to be a roll call vote. So I'll call your name, and you can say yay, nay, or abstain. Okay? Lou?
Uh, yay.
Steve?
Yay.
John?
Yay.
Brenda?
She's muted.
She, you muted her.
She keeps muting herself, hold on. Let's see.
Can you put the thumbs up?
Are you embedded? There you go.
Unfortunately, if I use the thumbs up, people on the phone can't hear me or see me. So yay.
Okay, Kurt?
Uh, I'm a yay.
All right, and then I myself am a yay also. So clerk, that passes unanimously.
6-0, yeah.
Okay, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. That gets us to the next part of our, our discussion. So when we put this together, I thought it would be a good time to get all of the leaders here in town together in one spot to kind of go over everything that we've been doing since the emergency declaration was done on, on March 12th. So I would like to thank Dr. Willett for taking time out of his extremely crazy schedule, and Rob Miller, again, for taking time out of his extremely crazy schedule, and Chief Laitel for taking time out of his schedule, and his crazy, insane schedule, to come and kind of give us an update. The town has done a lot of things so far, and I know Mike has a list together of the things that we have done, the ways that we've communicated this information, and information that's on the websites, and what we're going to be doing in the next few days. So I think we'll start with Mike for a little quick rundown, and then we'll go around to everybody else to get an update.
That works for me. So thank you. Can you all see me still? I just, I minimized my screen, so it's.
Yes.
Okay. So again, I want to echo your thanks, Tammy. I know, you know, the special guests we have tonight are all very busy, just, just the same as we all are. And Rob being here from the Health District during this time of crisis, it means a lot to us to help to educate the public who's listening right now. So just to kind of bring us up to where we are today, you know, we did issue the emergency declaration on March 12th. That was again for public health and civil preparedness emergency. So something that doesn't happen every day, but we did what we needed to do. By doing that, we activated the EOC. We increased the flexibility to do things like closing public assets. And it gave us the opportunity to track our expenses related to the emergency, which we obviously just discussed for hopeful reimbursement from FEMA. Also, something that may come up again later is that by going into emergency declaration, it puts us under unified command, which is a very streamlined way of doing things. John Laitel is our emergency management director, and we look to him for his wisdom during this time. So I work very closely with John, and we're going to get through this thing. And that's, that's what I've heard a lot on a lot of these conference calls, is that we're all in this together. We're going to get through this. I want to echo that sentiment, that I agree with all that. So since, since we've declared the state of emergency, as I mentioned, the EOC is activated. You can see John Laitel and his camera. That's where he's working out of right now. That all, we also activated the Community Emergency Response Team, also known as CERT. And one of the first actions was the closure of the schools, which as of now is going to be through April 20th by order of the governor. So that's, as we have seen before, that date can be changed. But again, that was good forward thinking by our superintendent and Board of Ed to close the schools to help flatten the curve, that we've all heard that phrase, flattening, flattening the curve. On the town side, pretty quickly thereafter, we circled our wagons and we closed the library to the public. We did allow limited pickup services that are, that were available for the last, I think it was eight days or so now. And I heard that 50 library users have utilized the service, book drop off. But unfortunately, we're going to have to discontinue and phase out that practice. The Librarians Association has given guidance to our library director that we are just being very cautious here, that returned materials can still have germs on it and spread the disease. And so we are going to phase out the book up, book drop off practice. That'll be updated in the press release that's going to go out. But this is a heads up for those who are on this call now. We also very quickly closed the public, understanding that those, those are our most at-risk members of the community. So we wanted to make sure we didn't have the opportunity to spread COVID-19 through our senior center, and similarly through our recreation centers. It's closed at the lodge and the fire stations. And then the next domino to fall was the town hall being closed to the public. It took a few days. We tried to see if it was going to work out by having the town hall open, but we called around to many of our surrounding municipalities, and we talked through with the council. And the best decision was to, to close the town hall in the public, even though we are fully staffed inside the town hall. Other changes have been echoed a few times now in various press releases, but garbage pickup has been modified, bulky waste pickup was canceled. The playgrounds, the four playgrounds in town were closed to help just stop the spread. And there's some good work the Human Services Department is doing to work with special needs families and proactively contacting families. And I guess, when this boils down, the town is trying to be both proactive and reactive. Clearly, guidance changes by the day. We're constantly on conference calls with the state, the CDC, Governor's Office, the Health District. We're moving and grooving, and we're trying to adapt to things as, on the fly here, this has been unprecedented. So we're doing our best. And we are, where every day things change, so we're trying to keep up with the trends and what's going on with the other towns in the area, too. We've had a couple other meetings we can touch on, but just in general, Human Services, Human Resources, and the Senior Center are reaching out to seniors who may be in need. We've worked on some contingency planning for town hall, including the potential for having some staff work from home on an alternating basis, so that we can help further separate people and flatten the curve by doing social distancing. So that's something that we haven't enacted yet. But the good news is, is that the town hall will still be staffed. It might be more of a skeleton crew, but we will still have people working either in the office or from home. And we're doing, we're navigating that right now. We've also worked with some of our local businesses. And specifically, we have reached out to Big Y about doing early senior hours for shopping and the prescription delivery process, which is something that they actually enacted, I believe, company-wide. I don't want to take credit for that. I don't think it was us specifically, but we did push them in the right direction. And this, we're doing public meetings remotely. Look at us in the 20. Something that I'm proud of. I don't know if we've ever had a meeting like this before, so, pretty cool.
For part of history.
Yeah. So two important phone numbers for people to take note of, too. The press release from yesterday. But we've established two calling numbers at the EOC. One of them is for volunteers who would like to volunteer their services or their skills, or just, they want to help out in some way. And these numbers are on the town website, but just for those of you who might be watching, 860-375-8211, if you'd like to volunteer. If you are somebody who needs non-emergency help or assistance, you've got a number to dial as well, a different number. And when we, when we have the fire chief slash emergency management director give a little update, maybe he can share when those numbers will be manned, what time during the day. So that's, that's kind of where I want to wrap up. When we've been doing a lot of public communication, this, Facebook, Twitter. We've been putting everything on the website. We've been putting everything on the emergency management website as well, that has a red banner on the tallinn.org website. You can click that and go right over there. Good information about small businesses and things. But I don't want to steal everybody's thunder because we have some other special guests tonight. So, you know, Madam Chair, if you'd like to turn it over to anybody else at the moment for their updates.
Yes. Dr. Willett, I was hoping you could kind of give us a high level of where the schools are, what's going on over there, and any information that, you know, would be beneficial for everybody to know?
Sure. So the Tallinn Public Schools, as Mr. Rosen said, have been closed since April, have been closed through April 20th at this point. The governor did also put out information that suggested, I think also, as Mr. Rosen had said, that the schools may be expected to be out through the remainder of the school year. So we're kind of sitting to see what's going to happen next with respect to that, but we're making plans to, to be ready for that, should that be the case. And it looks like there are many indications that it may be. We've started a lunch distribution program to families in need. Currently, we're doing about 65 to 75 lunches daily. People preorder their lunches by about 9:00 AM every day, and we have them ready by noon for pickup. We're thinking about expanding that. We've heard that some of the families are also having some trouble with breakfast. So we're looking at expanding that program to also include breakfast. The reimbursement rate for that through USDA is about $3.48 for lunch and at about $1.84 for breakfast. So we try to stay with, well, we do stay within those boundaries so that we're within the programs, programs specifications. We also have got some funding building into commodities that we can use. So we shouldn't lose any money as a district on this. We should be reimbursed for it, and it's, it's for a good thing, obviously, for the families. We have approximately 400 Chromebooks that were distributed to parents and guardians in a few waves based on escalating levels of need. We're in the process of distributing some of the final ones now to doorsteps. I started originally doing that out of the front door. And then when we got, got the increased directives from the Governor's Office and from others not to have interactions, and they started shutting down more and more of the businesses, we, we decided to do more of a delivery paradigm for that. We're at the point where we're almost completing that. And, you know, we should be able to take these to people's houses, put them, you know, they're expecting to see us. We put them or hand them through the front door, We put them or hand them through the front door, so there's very little interaction involved. Right now at the schools, we're starting a continuity of learning plan. That means that the state originally was asking school districts to do a supplemental learning plan, more about reinforcement activities. That was prior to them understanding or looking at the longer absence or need to close the schools for a longer period of time. Since that time, they've now asked us to go to what they called a distance learning plan, also known as a remote learning plan, some people call it virtual learning. So we've shifted to what I'm calling a continuity of learning plan, which is essentially focused on new learning. So we're not doing just reinforcement, now we're doing new learning and doing it in a way that can be accessed remotely by all of the families in Tallant. So we're moving aggressively into that. The teachers come back on, well, March 25th, which is tomorrow. So they are back virtually tomorrow and we have all kinds of virtual PD and virtual rooms with virtual video conferencing, just similar to what you're doing right now. We're doing a lot of this work with teachers, the workforce, as you know, over 200 teachers, the workforce overall about 414 something. So we're going to be doing a lot of onboarding, a lot of getting people ready to go. The next couple of days are all about that with the staff and then we start school for students again on March 30th virtually. So all kids will be coming on for our first day of school in a virtual methodology as of Monday, March 30th. So we're in the process of gearing up for that right now as well.
So that's good, those are doing a lot, that's awesome. I had a question and I can't remember what it was, but thank you.
Say, there you go.
Does anybody have any questions or anything for Dr. Willett?
I just have to say, I think it's this Lou Lubo, I think it's great, Dr. Willett. I mean, what you're doing and how you're working on this, I think it's it's outstanding. So thank you very much for what you and your staff and all the teachers are really doing, it's a great job.
Thank you, the 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 people working for the school district have been working tirelessly for for Tallant and I'm very proud of them. Thank you very much, they'll deeply appreciate that, they'll deeply appreciate that, thank you.
Actually, I do remember now, Dr. Willett, I know one of the things that you put out was help help for people who might need internet access. Do we know if we've been able to make sure that everybody that's home has has access to be able to use the Chromebooks and such?
So far, we know we've been making personal connections with all the families to determine exactly what their needs are. We have had a couple of families that needed help with internet access and we've provided it. We don't have too much more of a capacity to do that at this point, but the families that have needed it were able to do it. We have, we have a little bit more capacity for that, but hopefully what we're getting to is hopefully the end of the requests. And we hopefully will have been able to cover everyone and I'm confident that we will have been able to cover everyone. We're getting a good understanding of what people need by reaching out, you know, we get them submitting things online and then we reach out personally to make sure we understand exactly what their needs and situations are. As you noted too, Comcast and a few other companies have provided opportunities for people to get internet free for a couple of months or at extremely low cost. So that's been helpful too.
Actually, I did have one other question and I don't know if it's anything that you can really get specific on now. But do you know what we're going to be doing for kids with IEPs or 504s? And like people who need extra help with learning, how that's going to be managed through a virtual setting?
That's the big question across the state right now. I think everybody is continually looking for guidance from Commissioner Cardona as well as from, you know, Governor Lamont. So we're going to be further extrapolating that situation and talking a lot more about it as we go along. But we are making plans to hold the PPTs, to do the same kinds of structural components that we always do. And, you know, we'll just be using a lot of technology to get a lot of that work done. And continually looking at, you know, looking to the state for direction about how the state feels we should be handling those those issues. So we're right at the beginning of that and, you know, working working out the kinks on it.
Hopefully, we'll be able to really utilize the paras and stuff too, so, you know, we can make sure we keep as many people as we can employed through all of it.
That's the goal, yeah, yes.
I see Kurt has a question.
Yes, I do, a quick question, Dr. Willett, what is the plan right now for the paraprofessionals? Was going through all this?
I'm currently, I'm currently talking to the paraprofessional unit, so hopefully we'll have it worked out soon. I have the teacher unit, the secretary unit, custodial unit, all the other units are all set. We're still working with the professional unit, but I'm confident, I've worked with the unit presidents. I think I have, I think I have a plan that that will work for everybody and I'm confident we'll get we'll get that onboard very soon.
Okay.
So when you say working with, you just give a little more color to what that mean, I mean, is it?
I work, when you work with a bargaining unit, you work with the presidents of that bargaining unit and their representation. So that's that's where I'm at right now. I think the 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 information and the opportunities that were are continually put on the table for that group. I think they'll they'll, I think they'll like frankly, but we're in the we're in the last stage of getting that finalized.
Sounds good.
And one of the other things I mentioned on the governor's call, Dr. Willett, was the bus, the bus contracts also. Do you know, do you have any kind of update on what they're going to be doing with that?
Well, we're currently working on that, that's a statewide thing, it was done in a in a way across the state. So, you know, we're looking at that and we're seeking legal counsel to make sure that we approach that situation in the way that will help everybody.
Okay, does anybody else have any other questions for Dr. Willett right now? All right, then, I'm just kind of thinking, I'm sorry, Rob, I'm going to save you for the last because I have a feeling you're going to be the most depressing of us to listen to. So Chief Laitel, I know you guys have been doing a lot down there in the EOC and contacting people and that. I was hoping maybe you could kind of give us a high level of what's going on in the EOC right now. Any kind of, anything that you have updates on and anything that you feel like we need to be doing to help you out more here?
So more or less, the biggest thing, like I said, is once we establish the emergency operations center, that we definitely need to work through the unified command and coming together of all of us together, so we're all in this together because there's a lot of different moving parts from, you know, police, fire, health. And in a much broader picture, so a lot of us from the emergency services organization, whether we're emergency management directors or fire chiefs or other aspects, the conference calls are just obviously overindated, all of us. And we're getting a little disturbed that we're trying to, you know, push the guidance up to the governor's level that there's nothing, you know, that the messages that are going out are very, obviously all standard, obviously the world and everybody's referring everything to CDC. And we're referring back to the state DPHs and then referring back to local health directors. But from a standpoint, there's nothing more disturbing from a lot of us that, you know, we obviously can watch the governor at three o'clock and then obviously have a conference call at five o'clock and hear a lot of repetitive messages or getting informations. When we as, you know, whether CEOs, leaders or powers that be should be getting information and powers to be ahead of time. So we can be ahead of the public versus trying to stand a conference call and having your phone or emails ring off saying, did you hear this? Are we doing this? And it's just, it's very hard. So, you know, fortunately, I hold a lot of different titles and various things that we started way ahead of the curve of this and it was very proactive of our new town manager. And he's obviously got some big shoes to fill with, you know, our past town manager having a lot of declarations of emergencies and going through this and having years of experience before. So, you know, our poor town manager is coming into this from different levels, from different states, whether it be Massachusetts and Connecticut. So he's hit the heart, he's hit the ground running here and we're trying to give him the the guidance and the support that we can. And and right now, it's just, we're in a lull somewhat. And if I can urge the stress that we need to come together unified to come forth with one standpoint, community messaging. Because I can tell you that every single morning and every single night, my phone starts at 6:15, six o'clock. And I am not off of it until nine, 10, 11 o'clock, every single night, talking to other communities and other vested parties. And we're very discouraged on the emergency services side that believe me, we are, we are making our notes and we're documenting our our dots and, you know, crossing our Ts here because we just sent one of our call, one of our emergency responders over to the town of Windsor because the state opened up a small stockpile of masks. So when I say that we were ahead of this a few weeks ago, you know, probably eight years ago, seven years ago, I came to the community and Mr. Miller or Rob that's on the, you know, conference tonight with us was at that meeting with us. And it was a choice whether we bought a lot of supplies for the Ebola. And, you know, we might have bought in some, but we really didn't go out like a lot of communities and buy a lot of money and a lot of supplies. But we've, we've had some, we've had some in stock and some of ours are expired as well. But it's a scary factor when something is this large that, you know, unfortunately, my staff have gotten over it. But I had to spend a lot of numerous nights down here, taking a lot of our stock out of our firehouses or our places and locking them and moving them under key. Because this was going to be a large pandemic that everyone was going to be in crisis for, you know, masks and face mask and gloves and different type of stuff. So we were able to, you know, kind of keep our pile and secure it in a different location. But we also have a lot of semi expired stuff, but we're pretty good with, you know, some cleaning supplies and, you know, some face masks. But we, like every other town and every other municipality and every hospital and nursing office and everything else, put in requests to get N95s because it's something that you don't really largely stockpile. And from a nation, we're hitting it from Connecticut that it already affected all these other states and all these other communities that everyone put in that order at the same time. And when you, when you get told that your order might be here in August, maybe September, it gets a little scary. So we started thinking outside the box, but obviously, once the presidential declaration, that opens up federal. And it's a little scary that when we open our state stockpile and we were, we were very disturbed today to learn that we would receive, could you grab me that box over there? We were very, very disturbed to see that last week, we only received a box of small masks and they were expired from from the health agency and not Rob's, but obviously the state. But today, we sent somebody over to receive two boxes and each box contains 210 masks. And the 210 masks, and I'm not afraid to publicly say this, are all expired as well. And they all have broken side straps and we're able to go, we're able to go to the hobby shop or one of the places that does floor arrangements to try to fix the masks, but they're expired. And there's nothing more crucial that when my people are on the front line of this, of taking people and transporting people and worrying about the secondary, the third contact, the face contact. And obviously, we're getting more into an epidemic where, you know, you would see what Florida is doing for isolations and some people might not be telling us and some people might not be, you know, being upfront with stuff. It's scary and then we all don't know of how it's being spread as far as, you know, we all see the logistics on CDC as far as the times. So we're, we're going through a lot of cleaning stuff, we're going through a lot of sanitations, we've locked down, we don't want people here. We've canceled all the training. I've deployed four to five strategically placed bags with equipment into certain officers' vehicles around the community. So if there was that call and we needed to get the manpower into the house, we would. But like my press release said a week ago, that, you know, even like my press releases and my stuff coming out, it should come from our, from our town CEO and come from a unified command. So we're all getting the same message, there's nothing worth shattering that if I don't share my my press release with the town manager and he doesn't see it, he doesn't need to get the phone calls saying what's happening with the emergency services in town. So, you know, it's something that we had to do a change of business of even the normal fire call. So we're, we're limiting personnel, we're limiting people to the scenes. I'm worried about the training long term, we could do, you know, we can do these type of meetings, but it doesn't meet the requirements of a lot of stuff as far as the hands on. So it's crucial. Three other towns and I will find out more information tomorrow night from a, you know, as a county coordinator of 26 towns. I'm hearing that there's a lot of staffing that's not showing up in other communities at nighttime or after hours when our career staff's not on. And with us having a limited career staff of only six people, it only takes one call for me to say, okay, these two are isolated, they're offline and get one more call. That would be a detrimental situation to this community and then I would be taxing another community. I know Coventry just hired another contracting service to back up their town, but we're, we're a little nervous. So that's where we're taking strides, but you can see the, you can see the people's faces from day to day of the different news and the different numbers when they wake up and hear it and see it. And, you know, fortunately, it's a scary situation and, you know, when it affects you personally, it really hits you. So we're trying to be ahead of it, we had a great meeting with Bev Belli today at the human services. She came down, we put a plan together as far as trying to support the elderly population as far as the food bank and taking donations and trying to quarantine some of the donations or leaving it for a period of time and then trying to give her support. So we have a great search team, we've based a lot of volunteers in this community where now's the time, they've been waiting for something and they've been dormant for years. So now's the time that we can end up using them and unfortunate, a lot of them are, might be older. But we have distancing down at the EOC where they can take calls and at least provide comfort. And some of those phone calls coming in the next few weeks might just be a comforting phone call, just to talk to a human or, you know, to talk to somebody versus watching a news media. We've also ramped up the Everbridge 911, we put that out as a community alert. I can only stress that when we put out the first message, we had a lot of people reach back out to ask how to sign on, how to get onto it. And we're trying to push that as one, one messaging as well. So there's not a pandemonium. If you have different press releases and different informations getting out and, you know, everyone's wondering who's doing what and what's happening and who's on what page. It's scary, so we're trying to, we're trying to come together. We've had some technical difficulties at the EOC that, I'll be honestly, has put me back three to four days. We've had some great volunteers come in here, but with the limited IT and different things and obviously learning new platforms like the Zoom and, you know, trying to record and learn things, it's a learning experience for all of us. There's no, there's nothing in our manual. Then I, I actually been going through my emergency manager, management director book for the last two weeks and still looking for that page of how to deal with this. But, you know, we fall back to things that were put in place before with Rob's department that we've gone through a pandemic plan. And, you know, we did practices and stuff like that, so we would end up following a lot of different guidelines from the health department. But overall, this is going to be a long battle, but there's some great things that can come out of this right now of people coming closer, people reaching out to their residents, their neighbors down the road, coming in and helping each other. And if anything, hopefully building up more of a solid volunteer list down the road because I think this might pop up or we might have something in similar, something in similar fashion pop up in another year to two years. And if we work hard right now and put the the measures in place, we'll be better off down the road. So right now, we're trying to support few towns. We did take our box from Windsor, thanks, we did take our box from Windsor and we actually donated that to Stafford because they only had enough supplies to do eight more calls because they're dealing with Evergreen. So a few of us towns around gave some supplies to them. But, you know, like right now, we're scrambling to look at our construction companies, our businesses. And we've had a few people walk in today with some donations of some masks and some isolation kits. So we're trying to protect our people as best we can. We've gone to secondary and third measures, I've been, you know, emailing Rob for guidance and, and, you know, the guidance from the state. You know, Rob's in it, Rob Miller's in a tough position because obviously he takes all his phone calls from DPH and, you know, they take the recommendations and the guidance from CDC, but and then we're supposed to work through our regional coordinator through Dimas because once the state EOC is open, that's the state EOC works back to the local EOC and that's where the channel is. So a lot of these measures that are taking place, I have an overall responsibility to the community to basically come in every night or every morning and update our state web EOC. So our, my regional coordinator can have that snapshot. And the biggest thing with the storm funding and the federal funding is that anytime that assets are requested, whether it be any type of equipment, vehicle, anything else to manage the operations, it's got to be put in through a request through the state and I need to post that in the web EOC, no matter what department it might be, it work in this as a town. And I need to put in those requests and either get a denial or get a, or get a, get an answer back that they might be able to get it from another community or another state. So I need to put those requests in and we have to, we have to manage that, we have to make sure that we're tracking that. So whether we got, you know, we did get approval or we got denied and then we went and bought something. Well, at least you have a paperwork and a paper trail to go back to say, well, we asked for this and it was denied. So that's the biggest aspect, but right now, I'm trying to manage the EOC with the limited staffing. Tomorrow, hopefully, we'll have a press release of what dates and times, but right now, those phones are manned Monday through Friday, eight to five, if this ramps up. I don't want to burn out my my emergency service staff like I did years ago and I, and I'm gracious for them that that's why we have such a great department in this community because I had a lot of great people, but I burnt a lot of people out. We've already started reaching out over three weeks ago to a lot of our volunteers that might have left us or retired to see if they're interested to come back and that we can re swear them and swear them into a volunteer position. Under Title 28, any volunteers are helping out any agency in the community. It needs to go through the CEO as far as a volunteer group that's managed. And it's, they're under that declaration for coverage in case somebody gets hurt, something happens. So we, that's why we started that phone list to start building that list. But that also works in a bigger fashion where Rob and the health department are going to look out for volunteers that would be possibly interested in joining the medical reserve corps. And if that's something I can rebuild that list, because we had a great list of 250 people or 210 people years ago with Rob. So there's a bigger picture of that, but there's so many different moving parts here. Right now, we're looking for expertise of people that are great, excel war documents because I, I'm going to burn out my two office staff and one of them is only part time and Betsy and Kelly do a phenomenal job down here. But if right now we're in a lull of storm and I can build my volunteer list and teach those secondary jobs to somebody else, then the job can still be functioning 24/7 because we might get into a 24/7 operation with the EOC. And I surely hope that I don't get sick. But I'm trying to, I'm trying to manage, you know, a lot of different aspects and a lot of moving parts here. And I got great command staff underneath me that are taking some other roles and functions, but I need to fill those other positions of all the entities in the town. From human services to public works to recreation and everything else wise where manage and learn these other jobs, this might be vital. And if not, we've got a secondary training method in place if it pops back up. So a, a lot of moving parts. We're thinking outside the box. We've had a lot of great support of some donations come in here for um, some masks and some food stuff. Some of the restaurants have reached out to us as well. You know, and right now we did make arrangements with most of the restaurants around here to have a plan that if I needed to go to the 24/7 operation, where would I get ready-made meals and store and have food ready for E O C or staffing at the firehouses 24/7? Because I don't have the space for that. One of the disappointing factors that I can tell you is I've reached out to seven, seven legislators as well as some other dignitaries, because if I have to staff my fire personnel or my people for an exposure, there's nowhere to put them. And most fire departments around are looking at putting them in, into the schools. I don't want to bring them into the senior center, that's a secondary shelter we have in town. And I don't want to put pandemic into the school to say, we took over a school to, you know, to house different people, because that would, that would throw a, a nerds of, you know, nervous in some other community as well. But from the banking industry, I'm a little disappointed because I reached out to a few banks to say, you've had these houses on the market for 30 days, 60 days and they're bank-owned or something else. Can't you give me a house, just put on loan for 30 days in case I need to put two people in there? But I've reached out to Card, the old Cardio Express. I have other, couple of other places that if I had to put a couple of my people in there. But obviously they need heat, water, showers and some amenities. So um, that's one of our crucial points from Towland, but all the way across from Towland County. And um, you know, from the legislative standpoint, I, I just can't believe that we can't take over a hotel that's close, that's not being really used and people aren't traveling. And give me one block of rooms of 15 rooms or something and, and block it off and at least reserve to say if this was a need. The only commercial company that reached out was Lee's R V um, that they dropped their discounting rates, but we're still talking a thousand dollars. One of my emails that's going out tonight is to the regional coordinator to say, where's all these federal FEMA trailers that if we need, they're sitting there. If I need to staff my um, personnel, we had hundreds of FEMA trailers for disasters across the state and nation. Why aren't those being put up as an asset? So it's a scary factor when um, you know, the federal reserve is being opened up and I, I truly hope and, and it'll probably be on the press, but I truly hope that the federal national stockpile of these gowns and masks are not expired as well. Because that doesn't, that doesn't, that doesn't put any um, reassurance in my staffing, knowing that you might be wearing expired um, safety gear going into a, a situation. Because this is like a hazmat situation for us. So um, we're nervous, we're watching it. And, and obviously we're seeing a little jump and a spike out our way, but um, hopefully with the guidance and you know, hopefully the testing and the other things come um, faster and it's, we kind of slow this and dampen it. I'm glad to see a lot of places started closing. I did reach out to one, one place tonight to say, how are you having a, a funeral or a gathering for a, for a wake? I'm a little nervous of that, but um, most of the other places closed down and um, we've had great uh, Zoom meetings with our businesses. They've all stepped up, we're trying to build a business list where they can share ideas and share information and then hopefully get up, out to the community as far as what they're doing for ready-made meals or other services. And we've also had a great relationship with the, the religious community and they've opened up their doors to myself as well if I needed it. And um, from this, from the religious community, we're hoping not to duplicate efforts that, you know, if they're reaching out, they're their people. And we have the elderly housing and the, the health director, I mean, the uh, service director, human service director reaching out to her staff. We're compiling one list down here, so we're not sending a pandemonium message of calling one individual twice to say, oh, this could be really bad because if someone gets that phone call, I don't want to send pandemonium. So that's kind of a wrap-up. I don't know if I missed anything, I know I talked fast.
No, actually, John, I see we have a couple of questions. I have one question um, on the governor's call the other day. They mentioned getting together a list of medical professionals that are in town to be able to help out. If um, if we do find ourselves short of people, do we have any sort of list like that?
Yeah, we're trying to, we built up a list of already of our, our people that have left and our people that have retired.
D P H. No, I, I think they were talking more about like nurses and doctors, people like in town that are medical professionals that could maybe help.
Yeah, and we're hoping that some of those volunteers will come through that call list, the spreadsheet that we developed. When they call in and say, hey, I want to volunteer, I want to help out or I could do this. We built out the spread list to um, put their credentials down. Whether, whether they're a truck driver, whether a medical professional, whether an I T person. Just because if we lose our I T in town, I, I need a backup plan as well. So we built out a spreadsheet to hopefully funnel the credentials of the people that call in, so that, that's a great point. But if you heard, if you heard from the governor's thing, they, they only asked about um, reappointing police officers and everything else and you know, like our aspect saying, I know about five E M Ts that their medical licensing expired last year. Are they going to waive that as well? But there was no, there was no um, forward thinking on that aspect.
Yeah, um, okay, I'm gonna go with uh, Steve has his hand up. Steve, you have a question?
Okay, so yeah, Steve Jones. So Chief, I know yesterday I stopped, you know, I stopped in, at the E O C and we talked a little bit about sort of the unified messaging that there is some parameters that we hadn't made decisions on yet. And I just wanted to know if there's anything we can do as a council to make decisions that will make your job easier as well as kind of unify our message with neighboring towns and region.
Well, from a neighboring towns and, and, and don't, um, I hope nobody on the phone takes this um, hard, but um, even, even our town manager. But like I talked to a lot of officials this morning, um, police and, and fire and EMS officials from other aspects as far as even emergency management directors. There has been no great guidance, um, especially from our C C M. And our other municipalities, they're supposed to lead and help lead municipalities. If they all just basically came up with a plan to say, hey, we're going to adopt this, that the state's doing for state employees and other aspects. And this is what we're going to do for workers here and we're going to do for that. Every town around here is doing something different. And that's one of the reasons I tried to grab the emergency services quick enough to say, what are you doing? What are we doing? Share, and I tell you what, that went off like fire because everyone was on the same page, sharing ideas and sharing thoughts and being the same way. So you know, if we're medical screening our firefighters and E M Ts here before the shift, I don't have another town next door going, well, they're not doing it, why are we doing it? There's no, there's nothing there. So from a legislative standpoint or a governing body, I think all you town CEOs and uh, mayors and selectmen's need to have a dialogue and build a, a community uh, group now. Whether it be a Zoom meeting, whether it be a, a shared email, you guys got to share the information. So you're treating all the employees from a municipality standpoint and also looking out for the businesses. You know, all doing it uniformly. Tammy's dog didn't, didn't like saying, looking out for employees. It's okay, Tammy, I got that.
Is uh, somebody is coming in the house and everybody's in a bar, it's a party. That's what happens when you have meetings at home, people, sorry.
That's okay, I can hear that my name's mentioned in your house a lot and your dogs don't like me, I got it. In all honesty, it's one of those points where if the municipalities can come together, I mean, at least the governor um, deals with the super, the school superintendents and, and comes up with a date. So all the schools are doing the same thing from a, from a, from a standpoint of governing bodies. Where's our C C M and our other legislating bodies of all working together to provide the insurance? One of the big questions coming up from the unions of the police and the fire, is this going to be covered? Will this be covered if I become exposed? The biggest aspect of this, will those, those individuals, we have breathing problems or lung problems, will they pass a fit-for-duty test after this is over with? There's no medical expert that can give any guidance on anything, but you know, it's one of the things where I reached out to my staffing two weeks ago. Inhealers, I knew there was going to be a national shortages on inhalers coming out. And, and that was one of the things where right now it's going to be a crucial thing. So the towns working together.
Okay, so we can take that as a takeaway, Mike. Maybe we can see, we can reach out to the towns around us to try to do like a, a joint meeting. I see Lou has his hand up, Lou?
Yeah, thanks Sammy, uh, Lou Lubo for the record. John, you know, you and Mike both uh, mentioned the unified command and uh, you know, that we're looking to start uh, or you know, that you're implementing it already. Could you just sort of explain uh, for the people that are watching, what the unified command is and how it operates as far as consolidation of operations and?
Yeah, basically, I mean, the unified command under the I C or their internal op, uh, internal, you know, operation plans of anything. You, you only, you establish a unified command plan and, and you dictate of how large the incident. Most, most of the time incident commands can be handled on scene, but in something of this nature, basically the, the terminology for a unified command allows municipal leaders to jointly provide manageable direction through a common set of goals and objectives through the planning and they work together. Including any anticipated for planned events of potential emergencies and similar to shutting down of businesses and shutting down of employees and shutting down of offices. So it, it allows you to determine what priorities, what actions you're going to take and you do that uniformly. You know, you use services together and it's something where if we went into a major situation right now and I had a reramp and staff up, I'd have to read it out to Walt to say, hey, we're going to take over this school and we're under a declaration. So I would take over a school and say, Walt, I need your cooking staff or Walt, I need those buses because like a part of a pandemic plan. Yeah, most of the time it might end up being a, a drive-through or somewhere else. But one of the plans we had was a busing, that we would bus certain people down to different inoculation sites at different times. So a unified command um, needs to come together to basically get out one message together. And it depends what aspects and what um, leaders that you're going to bring to the emergency operation table. Obviously, it's, it's the main ones, obviously your finance, your emergency management director, police, fire, superintendents, um, public works. People think in this epidemic, what would you have done if yesterday you had coronavirus wipe out your public works department yesterday? What would have done to this community or other communities if you had shortage of flowers and everything else yesterday? And at least under the Title 28 and the FEMA stuff, I have the power once the C E O gives me the authority to say, hey, reach out to Coventry and send over four trucks and, and that's a unified command.
Okay, thank you.
So um, is that something that, that we need to work on? Or is that something that we're kind of doing in a loose way right now that we need to tighten up or?
Well, one of the biggest things with unified command and once you get into, they've loo, they've lessened the restrictions on a lot of stuff. But anything that comes back to federal funding, you always want to make sure that your unified command or at least your department head leaders are at a, a minimum of an I C S level of seven, one and two. And depending on, you know, their level, you always want them to be one, they, you want them to be trained one level ahead. And once you take that training and that knowledge, then you understand how the unified command and a tier chart works. And you put the people at the table. And in an incident like right now, we might not have a lot of resources for a human service director, but she might be the logistics person and I might say, I need you over here. This is what I need, I need you to find this for me, I need you to get this for me. Then you're going to have a planning section. What are we going to do in two weeks? What are we going to do next month? What happens if the storm hit in January and February? And you had power outages and you had electricity issues, then it goes into that. So you know, you, you have your incident commander, you have your C E O. And then obviously the finance work needs to work hand in hand because you know, obviously the school's separate from the town. But yeah, we're one municipality, you need to bring your finance managers together and you need to put a backup plan for that as well. And that's why I kind of created that ordinance way back when with that fund where you'd be able to tap that fund. So you know, depending on the sections, you know, you have your operations, planning, logistics and finance and administration section. So you know, you fill those roles, but like in this epidemic, I can't stress enough to build it two to three deep. Because if you don't build it two to three deep, you're gonna have a problem. I mean, you know, the nice thing about my job and my stuff is I can do a lot of stuff and guide people, but in today's day and age, there's nothing better than a flash drive. When I leave my office, these flash drives are right next to the laptop. Someone can come in here, plug and play, up and run. It has the tier charts, it has the inventories, it has the contacts. But I also need to build that for our staff as well. And that's something we're doing in a county right now, that we're building a plan that if we had a staff, a town to put an engine and an ambulance for uh, you know, whether it be an eight-hour shift, a 24-hour shift. We're building that out right now and um, and we're putting that from a town-to-town aspect. So that's something to think about right now, even from the finance, you might not think of it. But what other towns are using Munis? Is it the same platform? Can you share the platform? Can an operating section work? So just food for thought.
Okay, uh, John Reagan, do you have a question?
My question is about communication to the community. So under the unified command, what, what does the communication to the community look like? Because sometimes we can get mixed messages, we're hearing things from the governor, we're hearing things from different sources. So as far as the communication to the public goes in our town, what does it look like under the unified command? Is it, should we look for one person to communicate information? Or are there multiple people? Are, is there going to be information coming from the superintendent? Is there information maybe coming from director of public safety, the town manager, whoever?
Mike, do you want me to answer that?
Yeah, I mean, all, all I was going to chime in was just that under the unified command structure, you generally have a public information officer or P I O that sort of pumps out the information. It's their job to gather and solicit information from all of the various section chiefs, like the chief, like, like the fire chief mentioned, whether you have planning, logistics or finance or whatever else, operations. You gather the information that's pertinent to the, to um, the next operation period and that's the information you're disseminating. And I'll let the chief kind of go a little bit further with it, but um, to, to, to date, we've been doing press releases from the town side. That's been mirrored on various social media platforms. But I'm aware that there's also other people that are sharing information, including people that are doing it on their own on social media. So that we don't have one singular voice.
Yeah, that's, I mean, you know, Mike hit it, hit the nail on the head. And, and if I got off my, if we got off the Zoom meeting tonight and I went home and, and went onto a, a, a social platform, which I am not in any of them in, in this community. I, I, the only thing that we ever do in, in our emergency agency here is the Twitter, the town alert. And if you notice, we only put out real true messages or information. But if I was end up to put out something else, you're sending a human to read another message. And, and what I urge, especially my staffing, that if you're getting a message from my operation, if you go home and put another message out, they're going to know by your Facebook page or they're going to know by your sweatshirt that you're sending a different message. And if it doesn't come out from one agency, then you're sending missed messages and, and you, you got to come from one agency. So you know, whether the town council has some important facts or figures, that's going to be funneled in through the town manager or the public information, whoever's designated at a time to put out one community message. And then if, you know, the different agencies that are there, obviously, you know, Scott Lappin wants to put out an information to his staffing, saying, hey, this is what's going to happen and this is what's going on. He's using the same information that came out from the press release or at least all the officials together. So we all sending the same message at the same time, so we're not sending a pandemonium thing. I mean, anybody can shoot and send messages and say, go to C D C, go to Eastern, and that's where we try to streamline the stuff. I mean, you're under an emergency operations center right now. A lot of those messages was, should be funneled through the C E O and the public information officer. And then posted, you know, obviously let people go to that emergency management page and, and read the guidance there. Because you know what, if anything, they'll funnel through the rest of the stuff. But you know, you, you'll have your different people that, you know, if Walt's sitting at the table, well, his, his job is to get it to the messages to his teachers and his kids as far as the, the school and how the school's going to operate and the, the education factors and their training links. I don't think the town manager should be sending out um, an educational training video or a, a school-related thing and, or sending out a fire-related video or in, in some other aspect. I mean, that, that's our jobs to reach out to our staff to, to provide that training, which we're trying to up and do the platform right now. And the last 10 I went out this week, I didn't run through Mike because that's geared towards my staff for training and education to keep their credentialing. But the rest of the community stuff needs to come from one platform. And, and obviously, if we have different people and, and obviously, you know, Rob Miller sends a directive out to the C E O, then C C's, the superintendents and the E M Ds and fire chiefs. We take that guidance from the C E O and the public information to send out one message. If I take Rob Miller's and, and send out my little dialogue to it or send out another thing, then it looks like there's three places of different information, if that makes sense.
It's worth noting too, that prior to putting out a press release, we do check in with all of the various um, entities, including the schools. Walt and I talk regularly. Do check with Rob Miller. I often send him drafts of the press release before they go out so that he can vet it and make sure everything's correct and update. Because as this thing changes, information changes so quickly, you can't even keep up with it. And of course, we, we spread it across the, you know, to, to the various department heads so that everybody could see it. So we're trying to do our due diligence to keep everybody as informed as possible on the town side. I agree with the chief. Certainly if the superintendent would like me to share information in the town's press release, we, we have that relationship where I'm, I'm good to go, I'm not writing that information, but I'll share that information. I, I think that would make sense since I'm not an educator.
That makes sense to me too, that makes sense to me.
You have a lot of kids that might, you know, you might want to use Walt's message as far as any training tools or any training websites that are, you know, might be homeschooled or go to a different school that live in this community that might be able to take advantage of that because maybe it hasn't come out from their end. that might be able to take advantage of that because maybe it hasn't come out from their end. Or maybe, you know, their school that they go to haven't provided their Chromebook, laptop, or whatever. So at least it gives, you know, another set of families another objective, so we're all sharing the same message.
Steve Jones?
Yep, Stephen Jones. So chief, I just wanted to keep in mind, someone that probably haven't talked about too much yet is animal control. And I was curious what contingencies are in place to keep Tina safe? Because it's a, that's a very short-staffed division.
We have the best of the best animal control officers around the county. So I love my people. Tina and Sam have been given direction to write up a SOG, similar to what we had to write up a standard operating guideline of how we're operating and what we're going to be doing in this pandemic. Because this is a different type of pandemic. So we want to make sure that we're, we're training. We're also meeting the OSHA regulations because that's the biggest thing of how you're handling this and making sure your staff is trained to know how not to come in contact with that. So, you know, every division needs one of those SOGs across the board here. So Tina and Mike, or Tina and Sam have been given a go-bag, just the same as my firefighter EMTs. They've been given the same training video to make sure that we assure them. But we're behind a little bit. And one of the other aspects, I'm hoping to include all the animal control officers on the conference tomorrow night with the other 26 towns, to make sure that we're providing a guidance to provide them backup as well. Because this, you know, if we wipe out part-time staffing or a small department, that will hurt. But Tina's very aggressive and I'm glad that she's wearing dual hats in our town and our community. So she reminded me saying, hey, just, just typing off, what do you need from us? What do you want us to do? So, you know, she, she kind of started it for me this week. And we started it last week, but we were able to get the supplies and get another bag. But, you know, some of my staff thought I forgot about them, but we did not forget about them. We did provide them some equipment as well. And we're providing them an SOG that we'll review tomorrow, probably finalized and get in place, just to make sure that they're protected as well. We actually sent them also just to double-check that they had their N95 fit testing with their physicals this year. So at least they're properly fitted and have a respiratory clearance, if that makes sense.
And then are we still, I'm forgetting, forgetting this. Are we still sending Tina and other individuals out to Wellington? And do they need a separate SOG because it's a different community?
Well, I've tried to, tried to pull those two towns together and, you know, what happens over that bridge or at that waterway and the other side is unfortunately. But I'm sure if they're smart, they would probably not recreate the wheel and just change the letterhead on top of it. So Tina's pretty as smart and we won't sell that to them, but they can create the same one.
Okay, great, thank you.
Hey, Brenda? Is she on mute?
You got her on mute.
Why do you keep muting yourself there, Brenda? Let's see. Okay, are you on muted?
Yes. My question is, how do we get this information that we're releasing in press releases to those people who don't have any access to the internet? Normally what they'll do is go to the library and use a computer. Or they could go to town hall and take a look at bulletin boards. Do we have maybe a phone number that they can call in and listen to a recording that lists the most updated press release with information that could be helpful to them?
John, I have, is the reverse 911, can people call that number to get information?
No, that's just a reverse 911, but it's a great idea about the, the phone number and maybe leaving the same Everbridge message that went out, or just a daily recording of the different activities. We could probably, right now, we're not in full mode-wise, I could probably steal one of the numbers that I have. Or maybe I can get another phone line dedicated that, down here at the EOC, that we could set that up. And that should be easy if I can make that happen.
I like that idea, I like the idea of a daily recording of any updates, a number that they can call.
Yep, great idea. And this is where, this is where the unified command comes together. This is where the great ideas and we work. So that's a great idea because it took us a little while to create those phone numbers. And I looked at the other ones and kind of left them blank, so we can use that for that, that's great.
And if you don't have a phone number to use, maybe a company in the area can dedicate one phone number on their phone bank to use that too.
Okay, let me see how I make out with this one, and I'll get back to the boss. And hopefully we can get this up and running at the same time that we put out tomorrow's press release.
Lou has a question?
Yeah, just for John and Mike, what, you mentioned about the webpages that, where there's information that's put on there. How often are those updated? I mean, I know that I've taken a look at them, and that if we can have everything like as far as the executive orders put out on there that are coming up, anything that the governor's office may be releasing, if we can put it on there, and if we could just let everybody know as far as what those, where those webpages can be located, so that we can have like basically one single webpage that has all the information that we need, so that it has all the executive orders, we could have a different, you know, link for that and stuff like that on there.
I would recommend, this is Mike Rosen, town manager. I'd recommend the website that is probably closest to what you're describing, Lou, is pollen.org/emergency-management, which is the link that's on the homepage, the red banner. That's got everything on it except maybe the governor's orders, I'm not sure if that's on there, Chief.
No, I didn't, but that's a great idea because as they go, there's different parts of the orders that affect different businesses and different players, so that's a good point.
But that also does have the most up-to-date press release. It also has the message from the superintendent from the weekend. That's kind of, if we're going to do that, this is the page we probably build it on.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, so pollen.org, pollen.org/emergency-management.
And I would just need help probably, having somebody help Betsy or Kelly just update that as we move forth. Because the webpage is just, it takes a lot of time to move some items around, Mike, if that's okay?
Yeah, that's actually something that I know Kim in my office does as well as I have access to. I'm the one who uploaded some stuff on there recently, so we could, we can work through that.
Perfect.
All right. Now, Rob, sorry, I was hoping you could kind of give us an update of what we're seeing here in town, what we can expect to see, anything that we're getting from the CDC or the Department of Public Health?
Sure, can you hear me okay?
We got you.
Okay, great. So I'm just going to start with some of the latest numbers we have from the secure surveillance system we have access to at Eastern Highlands Health District. In Connecticut, as of 2:00 this afternoon, there were 415 cases, 54 hospitalizations, and 10 fatalities. In the Eastern Highlands Health District, we had, we have 10 cases, six hospitalizations, and one fatality. Within the district, that breakdown goes as follows. One case in Bolden, one case in Columbia, two cases in Coventry, one in Mansfield, and five in Tallinn. Of the Tallinn cases, three of them are hospitalizations and one of them is a fatality, unfortunately. I do want to talk about some of the salient activities the health district's been engaged in since this response began. Since we started getting data, surveillance data from the state health department on cases, we've completed four, four case contact investigations, and two others are still ongoing. We can report out that there's over 20 acute care hospitals in the state that have now set up drive-through testing clinics. And the closest one in our area, closest ones in our area are at Backus Hospital, Manchester Hospital, Rockville Hospital and Johnson Memorial. And anybody from the general public with a doctor's order can go to any one of those sites and have themselves screened and tested for COVID-19. We have been informing TN every time we're aware of a case within their jurisdiction in an effort to protect our first responders and EMS providers in the area. We've been providing consultations, as John had alluded to, to our EMS providers regarding issues of PPE and other infection control issues. We've been working with and conducting modified food inspections of all our food establishments that remain open, particularly the convenience stores and the big, the big grocery stores to assure that they've eliminated all common touchpoints associated with self-serve, ready-to-eat foods. I do want, the other thing I want to point out is, is that we are in the process of activating our medical reserve corps unit. The Eastern Highlands Health District does have a volunteer, a unit of volunteers. They are comprised of both medical and non-medical volunteers. In the previous discussion, the point was made that there are local medical providers, if there's an interest. Well, this would be the perfect avenue for them to provide support in, provide support to the local communities in response to a public health emergency. We have, volunteers can enroll online on our homepage. The Medical Reserve Corps is very much like the CERT in that it's a national organization under the umbrella of the Surgeon General. It's similar in that it's a, in that is, can be coordinated both at the state and local and regional level. So it's an, it's an organized, coordinated way in which volunteers could be deployed in an effective and thoughtful way in the local area, should that be necessary. The other, the other thing I want to bring to your attention is that certainly the health district has fully activated our own emergency public health response plan and pandemic plan. And staff assignments have been adjusted accordingly in the new, in the new roles and to accommodate this emergency response. Also want to note that we are coordinating, communicating closely with the University of Connecticut and student health and wellness. Dr. Elisa Ayers is the medical director for the university. One of the big concerns is, you know, how's the university going to bring 9,000 undergraduates back on campus to get their personal belongings in a way that's thoughtful and thoughtful and protective of public health without creating undue risk to the local community for bringing so many students back on campus? And so I know the university is thinking very closely about how to do that. They are sensitive to the risks. And I, and at some point in time, I hope to have more information on how to do that. And of course, we've been providing all kinds of guidance to various stakeholders and partners in the community, whether it's food service establishments, whether it's employers or towns on how to, how to manage ill workers or workers who are close contacts, whether it's regarding food distribution sites and some of our human, human services agencies, self-protection for our senior population, updates for our healthcare providers in the area regarding infection control, testing, and whatnot. And we've been participating in semi-weekly conference calls with the State Department of Public Health and we can weekly with the CDC. And lastly, what I want to leave you with unfortunately is the realization that, you know, with five cases in the town of Tallinn, that really represents the tip of the iceberg, unfortunately. Each one of those case represents many, many, many more actual cases in the community. And so it's, 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 it's fair to say that there is sustained community spread in your community, that social distancing and keeping groups as small as possible is critically important for your, for your community and all the communities surrounding yours. And so we've been providing a lot of guidance in that regard to both municipalities and organizations on tactics and strategies and how they can be effective in, in, in implementing social distancing tactics. And in a way that, in which government in particular can still operate and function because local government provides essential services to their residents. And so the health district is here to support our local governments in a way that they can be protective of public health while still providing those critical services. So that's where I'm going to wrap it up, and I'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Rob, for that. I did have a couple of questions. You had mentioned if anybody who is a medical or non-medical volunteer, they can roll at the Eastern Highland Health District homepage. You had mentioned something about UConn coordinating, getting the students' personal belongings off campus in a safe way. Is there a possibility that we could maybe reach out to UConn to find out if we could, when they're done, maybe use some of the dorms like the other colleges are doing for quarantine perspective for our first responders?
So that's a good question. I don't think the university's quite there yet in terms of, I think what the issue is, is that they still have, as of yesterday, 2,400 students still on campus that they have an obligation to support. And, and by the end of today, actually, that number was supposed to be pared down to 1,200. 1,200 remain on campus indefinitely because either they're international students or they're students with certain hardships, which means they can't, they have no other place to go. The university has their own unique set of circumstances. And don't get me wrong, I'm not making, I'm not making excuses for the university. I'm just relaying some of the, some of the facts that they've conveyed to me. In that if they get a case which is symptomatic, they, like, you know, a local provider could do, they just can't send them home. And they can't send them back into a dorm setting either. So they have this extra, they have this extra accommodation in terms of housing and residency that they have to manage with respect to symptomatic cases or even positive cases. Now that being said, they have a tremendous number of dorms. Right now, all of them are filled with personal belongings. And so I think at some point in time, when all those personal belongings are removed, then they may have some, may have some capacity, and that might be an appropriate time to reach out to them. But they have a very challenging logistical issue with trying to figure out how to get all these personal belongings back to 9,000 students. It's, it's, it's not an easy one. I've certainly thought about the notion, I mean, the university has lots of resources. They're, you know, they're a relatively well-funded state institution. And at some point in time, I think certainly if this, if this crisis amplifies that reaching out to the university for support would be completely appropriate and necessary.
That's good to know, I agree. I think, you know, if we get to that point, if they have capacity and we have to start quarantining our first responders or anybody else, the other colleges are being pretty helpful with that, so it might be an option. The last thing you said there was really kind of what's, what's kind of weighing on me right now. And this kind of gets to the unified command and everything else and the possibility of us doing another reverse 911 call. We're currently working on updating that list. So it's not just the people that have been on the list, but we're using our voter registration information, which all of it might not be great. But you know what, the last call reached 5,500 people around there. This one, hopefully, with the new list, will reach a significant amount more between the 5,500 that we reached. And we know that 2,300 kids, people in town are kids, or 25 or 600 are kids. You know, add that to it, we're reaching about half of the people between Dr. Willett and the Everbright. So we'll get more people hopefully in this next go-round. But what you said specifically is, I want to find a way, how do we communicate? Having five positive cases in town, three of which are hospitalized. Like you said, there is definitely community spread. It is even more important now to be sure we are practicing social distance and keeping all of our groups as small as possible. It's critically important to the community, not just our community, but the surrounding communities also. It is, it's critical to our seniors and to our, our families of need and our compromised. So I would like to see if there's any way we can kind of get something together that we could communicate on that, that Everbright message. So we're, we don't want to cause panic or anything like that. But we also want people to understand that the virus is here in town. And it's vital that you are following the instructions and you're, you know what to do if you think you have symptoms. So what would you recommend for us from that perspective?
Well, this is a reverse 911 system. I, you know, there has been some discussions, and I agree with John, that, you know, I, I, you know, there has been some discussions and I agree with John that, you know, unified message is important. And if, and certainly our agency liaises to the Town of Tolland EOC. I, right now, am that liaison and support for the Tolland EOC. If the Tolland EOC through the PIO chooses to draft a message out through the 911 system, I was to make sure it's, you know, aligned with public health concerns and public health recommendations to the community. It seems to me that we could do something like that on a regular basis if the town so chooses.
I'm just more, I'm concerned, I think that'd be a good idea. I'm concerned that picks up. You know, right now, we're at five, like you said, for every person, I think the last number that I saw, every one person that's infected, it has a multiplication rate of three, so.
Right. So let me just, let me just clarify a couple of, I want to not confuse, I think we got some, a couple of concepts I want to explain. One is reproduction rate. And the other is, you know, with five cases in town, how many cases does that actually represent in your community? Those are kind of two different notions. So reproduction, reproduction rate, based on the current epidemiological data we have for this new bug is that for every one person who's infected, they have a potential if, of infecting 1.5 to 3.5 other people. If they take no infection control behavior, if they don't change their behavior at all, then that's the range. They change their behavior and they isolate themselves, then certainly they can cut that number way down. The other notion I wanted to just clarify is, you know, you've got five positive cases in town, how many does that potentially represent of actual cases in your town that just aren't detected yet? Or, or maybe never be detected because individuals choose to just simply stay home and convalesce without telling anybody or their doctor? And that number is many, many more. Doctor Matt Carter, he's a state epidemiologist, unfortunately, he estimated that for every one positive case, there could be as many as 100 more out there. So, so that's a much larger number unfortunately. And so that's, and that's where, that's why the social distancing strategies and other public health strategies are so important to kind of, as you've heard many times now, flatten that curve.
That's the part that I think that we really need to, there's, it's a lot going on in town right now, as you know, obviously, this is everywhere in Connecticut, where people worried about their jobs, people worried about school, people worried about, you know, feeding their kids, paying their mortgage and stressing out as it is. And we don't want to add more stress to that, but we want to make sure we get out as much information as we can to them. And finding a way to do that to, again, stress that, I know you've been in the house for the last eight days and, you know, but you gotta stay in your house. You know, you gotta, you gotta kind of socially distance right now and try to cut that down because, you know, we're, we're, we're seeing it here and there, there's going to be more. So then I guess.
Well, I think, I think if I may, I mean, it's important, I mean, in terms of unifying messaging, I think unifying with the messages that's coming out of the governor's offices would start. I mean, they're put, he's putting a lot of good information out there. And, you know, through the, I know he's being advised by some, some knowledgeable people in the State Department of Public Health. Doctor Carter, for example, is one of the best epidemiologists, state epidemiologists in the country as far as I'm concerned. And so they're trying to put out a balanced message. One, as far as I can tell, is emphasizing the critical importance of social distancing and, and the need to not only avoid large groups, but also stay physically apart from one another, while also understanding that there's a mental and behavioral and a well-being component to this. I mean, the governor after all has noted that while we don't want you amassing in groups, we want to keep your groups very small and if possible, down to one or two people. We're also understand that it's important to go out and go for a hike and for a bike ride and go kayaking as a measure to kind of offset some of the anxiety and fear that our communities are, are now experiencing and unfortunately will be challenged with moving forward. So, so while, so, so it's a balanced message, but it's an important message. And, and I think that, I think we need to get that messaging out there in a unified way, consistent with what the governor's doing through the State Health Department. And I think the emphasis definitely needs to be on, you know, not necessarily staying home because people do need to go out for essentials and do need to get exercise. I think the real important thing is there will, since we do know more cases are going to present themselves in your community, one of the things the Health District is doing is part of our contact tracing is when we do identify a case and identify close contacts, we're providing, providing them information that they need to self-isolate, self-quarantine. It's really the individuals who are, who are sick and their close contacts that really need to stay home and do their part to protect those around them. And so we're on, on those who are, are ill and their close contacts to ensure that, to, because that's, I think we have the greatest impact in terms of flattening the curve at the local level.
I like the idea of unifying it with the governor and then maybe putting some local. I want to kind of make sure that we're customizing it to, to Tolland. Just to, because we have, because we have more cases than the towns around us right now, except for Stafford, I believe, right? Stafford, I think, is higher than us.
And that's, to tell you the truth, that's just, probably just kind of chance, you know? I don't think that there's any cluster per se in your community. It's, it's, you know, you can, I mean, we haven't seen any pattern of that yet. I mean, I'm not saying it couldn't happen. But, you know, we just, two cases just popped up in Coventry in the past 24 hours. And so, and so these numbers are so small, they're too small to identify any patterns as of yet.
Yeah. Does anybody else have any questions for, for Rob?
Rob, just, it's John, just one quick question, I probably should ask this before. Those, those numbers that come out and just because sometimes some of my numbers for deaths or things that happen under the obituaries, I get asked a lot of questions. So some of those deaths that are being done from a town aspect, and obviously I sanction it towards Tolland or Stafford or some of the other places, are those residents or, and when I say that's right, residents, a lot of people ask me that, you know, when I see an obituary, it might be a Woodlake person, but it's not a resident.
So my, my understanding and, and unfortunately, you know, you know, the system's not as, as, as comprehensive as I'd like, but I get an address in the system and I've been informed that that addressed is their primary residence. So whether that is a single-family dwelling, apartment complex, or a long-term care facility, you know, I assume that that's the case. At this point, based on my understanding. But as with anything that's happened in the response to this thing, you know, my information could change tomorrow and then my understanding will change along with it and then we'll have to test accordingly.
No, I appreciate it. And I truly can't thank you enough for all you're doing and I apologize for so many emails or, you know, especially officials or whatever. So I, I know that you and especially Mr. Charlie from the regional, you guys, I know more than my emails, so thank you for what you are doing.
You're welcome, John, and thank you for what you're doing too, man.
Steve Jones, you have a question?
Steve Jones, just a quick question. If you're able to share, demographically speaking, who's being most impacted in Tolland in terms of, if you can share like the age range?
Yeah, so, let's see, I don't have, I'm going to go from memory here from what I remember because I don't have those numbers in front of me at the moment. But the, but the three hospitalized cases, I think, were all 80 or above. I know at least two of them were, I'm pretty sure all three were. And then you had, I think, a 30-year-old female and a 27-year-old male.
Okay.
Both of them.
I'm sure that's kind of in line with what we're seeing throughout the state and nationally that, you know, even though this is especially harsh on older individuals, that, you know, this can impact everybody and we all have to kind of take all those preventative measures together.
Absolutely.
All going to do our part. Anybody else have any other questions? Okay, since that's the case, what I'm going to do is I'm going to open up to public participation right now. We had a high of about 33 people and I think we've got about 26 people on right now. If anybody would like to ask any questions of anything, you can raise your hand if you're on the video chat or you can hit star nine on your phone.
Star nine on the phone.
Star nine on your phone or you can put in a chat if you want to enter your name, address and, and your question. And when I answer you, if you have a question, you have to state your name and address as you would at any other public meeting. Going to give everybody a minute to try to figure out how to do this. If they're all muted, they can still raise their hand, right?
Yes, they can raise their hand and you can unmute them one by one.
Going to give you guys about one more minute to see if you figure out if anybody has any questions.
You can give them the 15 minutes, I mean, I'm on until nine o'clock if you want.
Dr. Willett, Dr. Willett has a question.
Actually, I just wanted to also compliment Rob Miller. He's just done an amazing job for the schools, he's always there, he's met with superintendents a number of times, so just wanted to give him some kudos as well while we're waiting here.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think all the professionals that we're dealing with, Dr. Willett, John, I mean Chief Laitel, our town manager, Mike Rosen, you know, all the town staff, Rob, you know, everybody that's, you guys are all kind of going full bore right now. And I know I totally appreciate it and as I'm sure everybody else in town does. Dr. Willett, your hand is up again. Did you have a question?
Oh, is it up again? I'm just, I'm just giving, I'm doing high fives.
I was going to say, wait a minute here, you're like, you're like seeing that kid in class, you're just like, hand up, it's up again. Listen, this isn't a rap party. Raise the roof.
He's doing the CDC high five.
There you go. Down at the bottom, you have a little reaction, you can actually do a little high five or a hand clap there or a thumbs up. Steve, you have a question?
Actually, just a quick comment for, for Chief, because I know he said, I think when he initially started talking, that he had a concern about having his screen up for safety purposes. I just wanted to share with him that there is an option for the share, for your video that you can have a virtual background and it'll hide everything behind you except your head. So if you needed to keep anything identifiable out of yourself, you can do that. So that's what I have in my background right now. So just wanted to share that option with you.
You're going to have to come down.
If you're on future calls.
Yeah, come down to EOC and Unified Command, train me on that.
I, I will do.
It's funny, my, my daughter, her, the one who's going for her doctor, she's back home and all of their classes are online and her mentor keeps telling her, if you think I'm not teaching classes from Hogwarts, you are sadly mistaken. So her background is like the Hogwarts castle. I think Mr. Crikmore said that he had a question. Let me unmute him. John?
Hello?
Name and address?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
John Crikmore, 31 Cook Road, Tolland. Chief Laitel, I just had a question about the mask. You said that they were expired. What, why does a mask expire? I don't know if that's a stupid question or not, but it just, are they, they have something in them that makes them not work after a certain amount of time?
I'm going to be honest with you, in my years and years of experience, I learned from our latest animals inspection that even lot numbers have an expiration date. And I just learned that this year and we've been inspected for years and never had any problems, but a lot of the masks have expiration dates as far as the quality and, and the CDC gave us some recommendations as far as guidance of double checking them and, you know, doing a test to see if they're, you know, keeping their form. But a lot of times these boxes get, you know, either dented or stuff like that, so there's a lot, a lot of times expiration dates are on them. Probably good case in point example is like the box that we got today. The rubber broke down from a, and I'm not a scientist at all, but from probably the combination of the metal and the fibers, the, the rubber part snapped and I don't feel safe putting them back together, but we took them for worst-case scenario, someone had to hold it over their face. I mean, I, I got to take what I can get, but yeah, they had, they had expiration dates on all of them from 2006.
Oh, you, you'll take expired ones if we have them, if people have them?
Right now, I'm, I'm putting the stuff that's off the stockpile off to the side. So some of the small, you know, other things that we might end up using them for, but we're really trying to save the N95s or for anything that's an air, you know, when we do air treatments or a paramedic gets in and does a breathing treatment, anything with air droplets and air respirators and that type of stuff, we're saving the N95s for that because one of the biggest, you know, I don't want to get into the firefighting aspect, but if we come to your house and your house is under quarantine and I got to send, you know, two or four firefighters in, I got to follow certain regulations if I have to send two firefighters in, I got to have two firefighters out. But like I said, two guys in and we wear air packs, now I have to worry about decon and air packs. And one of the things that we thought outside of box was to get the cartridges for the air packs, the cartridges, just for even the firefighter air packs. Somebody else already thought of it, they're all backordered as well. So, you know, if I can get those type of masks for small containment issues, I would use them for anything right now, yeah.
Actually, John, there is a phone number, I know Dr. Willett, they also mentioned schools on the governor's call yesterday, but there's a number you can call if you know somebody who has expired ones because they're taking expired ones for the hospitals too, because their supplies are just so low. It's, it's a shame. So they're taking them. There's a number you can call from the state that you can, you can donate anything, whether you're like somebody who does floors or dentistry, anything at all, they're taking any kind of face masks for hospitals.
And that's one of those things that the community supports me. I mean, if I took any type of donations down here, as I watch our stockpile, ECHN or Johnson or especially like the Stafford area, they end up, they're really going through those like every single day. If that's something where they really get crucialized, at least I would have that to say, hey, we, we got another 20 or 50 to, you know, 100 to give to them as well. So that's why we've got a couple that walked in the door today, at least I can credential it and I can write it down and kind of record it and then get it into the right hands. Just because everything that's going on at the hospital level, it's hard to get to the front door, so at least I have the right contacts to get it through, so coordinated effort.
Thank you, thanks everyone, be safe.
Thank you, John. Anybody else on the line have any questions for any of the people that are on the call? Okay, I'm going to take it that nobody does because everybody would have figured out how to put their hand up or hit star nine by now. With that, you know, one more time at least from, from me and I'm sure the whole town council will echo this, you know, this is a really crappy time for all of us, but I think our town staff, all of them, you know, everybody, the volunteers, like John, all the people that are down there, everybody is, is doing more than I think anybody could humanly ask of them. And, you know, we appreciate it with every ounce of being. So if you can please all tell all of your staff down to everybody, the janitor, anybody who's doing anything, you know, that we really truly appreciate the effort that they're putting in.
We will, definitely, thank you.
That's, Brenda, yes.
31st, March 31st.
Any seconds?
Second.
I'm sorry, I think, I think Mike wanted to update us on the next week.
Oh, I just wanted to, before you motioned to adjourn, I just wanted to remind everybody, March 31st, we're having a special meeting for the public hearing.
Yes, thank you. Yes. Okay, I've had a motion and I've got a second. All those in favor?
Do we need to do a roll call or are we doing the?
All those in favor?
Okay.
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Any abstaining? Okay, Lisa, 8:55, we're adjourning. Motion, process, thank you guys, everybody have a good night.
Thank you, everyone.